Call the meeting of February 28, 2012 to order. Are there any public comments on closed session agenda items? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.
And the record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is currently absent.
Please join me in silent reflection. As we gather here tonight, help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. May we be reminded that we are stewards of this precious city. May we be the leaders our residents need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence all people deserve. And finally, may we be renewed with strength of joy from helping to build a community worthy of the human person. Amen.
I'd like to welcome Troop 741, which I gather is attending here to qualify for their citizenship and is it humility merit? Merit badge, welcome. I hope we don't bore you too much tonight. I'm very privileged to be able to make three presentations tonight. Would Vincent Valdez, Robert Hawkins, and Charles Unsworth come forward? These three men have contributed a great deal of time and concern to the city. Each of them has served on a commission for our city, and we really want to thank them for this. Charles Unsworth was on the Planning Commission from June of 2008 until November of this year. Robert Hawkins was also on the Planning Commission from November of 2004 till January of 2012. And Vince Valdez was on our Harbor Commission from June of 2009, January of this year. Again, thank you very much for all the time that you have offered for the city and the wise decisions I'm sure that you made during your tenure.
Thank you. I know we have a long agenda tonight, but I would like to say that with the exception of two years, I've lived in Newport Beach since my graduation from University of Michigan Law School in 1967. I lived on Colton Street in West Newport, Park Newport, Acacia Avenue in Cronin Del Mar, and various locations on the peninsula where I still reside. Being on the Economic Development Committee and Planning Commission gave me an opportunity to learn more about the city and to serve the city. Working with good people is always the best reward. It has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilwoman Diggle?
Yes, on March 15th, we have our annual police appreciation breakfast, and it will be held at the Hyatt. And last year, one of the statistics shared with the community is that our response time in Newport Beach is two and a half minutes. So from the time you called 911 to the police officer being at your door is two and a half minutes, which is impressive. And then this past year, we did add three more police officers on patrol. And we're anticipating with the realignment that there may be more activity in our community that we want to really be proactive about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
I do have several announcements. The first is, I would like to request that staff provide counsel with a report on the presumption that we do approve the parks and beach no smoking regulations that are on the agenda tonight. I'd like staff to come back to council with a report prior to the effective date that describes the proposed program for signage and for enforcement related to that new ordinance, especially in and around the commercial areas, and in particular on the peninsula. In addition, I wanted to announce that there will be no Neighborhood Revitalization Committee meeting in the month of March. We're down to basically now one Citizens Advisory Panel of work that's being done, and it won't be ripe for discussion at the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee probably until April. And then I was very pleased to attend on February the 21st, the swearing-in ceremony for our new fire chief, along with several other council members, Scott Poster. It's really great now that we've got the organization filled out at the top with capable people. On February the 22nd, along with, I think, almost all council members attending the Civic Center Topping Out Ceremony where we signed a beam, and we're now ready that we've got all the steel up, I guess, to really go gangbusters for a move-in date at the end of this year. I also was pleased to be able to attend the California, let me see if I can get this right, California Marine Affairs Navigation Conference, or CMANC, which is a lobbying group composed of a variety of people interested in navigation in the harbors, particularly here on the West Coast. And that group has been very helpful over time in working with staff and the Army Corps and various governmental agencies to help our city achieve governmental contribution and cooperation toward the dredging of our harbor, including the Rhine Channel and expanded lower bay dredging. Mayor Gardner and I were at the reception on the February the 22nd, and then on the 23rd, I provided some opening remarks and had a good chance to listen to Peter Walker. I didn't get that right. His name was Walker, who was the senior executive from Washington, D.C., representing the Army Corps, talk about their strategic plan for the upcoming year, and it left us, I think, with some insights to pursue from a lobbying and advisory standpoint for perhaps getting more federal funding over time. On February the 24th, I attended the Concordia Center for Public Policy Panel Discussion on Pension Costs. This is the group originally organized by Councilmember Curry, and found that to be a very interesting discussion, including remarks by Nick Baradino on respect of the employee unions, as well as two other experts. And it was a very worthwhile discussion. On February the 25th, I took a whole big bag of electronic waste over to the e-waste disposal site at the corporate yard, along with, I guess, a whole bunch of other people. And I just would recommend to everyone, that's a great way to dispose of electronic equipment and other items that you want to discard. A lot of it gets recycled, and that that doesn't get recycled gets disposed of in a properly environmental way. And so it's just a great thing to do, and I encourage everyone to be involved. Lastly, we had a post-audit review. I had a post-audit review with our auditors today in closing out the work for the audit of the city's annual financial report as of June 30th, 2011. And I'm happy to report that their view was that the audit went quite well, and there were no items of significance to be raised. And with that, I'm done.
Councilman Souch.
Nothing this evening.
Councilman Hill?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've received several calls over the last couple of weeks related to the improvements that have begun on Irvine Avenue at Newport Harbor High. And at our last meeting, I had requested staff be prepared to give us an update on that, so I would like to ask our city manager if staff could do that at this point in time.
Yes, Councilmember Hill, I believe Public Works Director Steve Badam is prepared to give you a brief comment on where we are with those improvements.
Yes, Councilmen, Mayor, members of council, to give you kind of a brief update of what's going on out there. We're kind of approaching this issue on Irvine Avenue at a two-pronged approach, and the one is the immediate issue to take care of things right now, and that was what occurred over the winter recess break. What essentially happened was we moved the drop-off zones away from the crossing guard area, the crosswalk area, to provide better visibility in those areas. And we actually placed cones in the adjacent areas to that crosswalk to kind of keep those areas clear. Additionally, starting next week, we will be installing a flashing beacon on the pedestrian crossing signs adjacent to either side of the crosswalk with actual push buttons, so when folks can walk up, hit that button, and it'll initiate a flashing response that is, from the demonstrations I've seen, will clearly get people's attention. So we think this will immediately approve the pedestrian safety in that area. As you also may be aware, Councilman Hill led the charge of convening a meeting with local community members, PTA parents, some of the students, the school district, Principal Vossen, and we met and talked about a long-term solution that we want to look at, and that's the next step. We heard a lot of issues from parents and folks, and we've also gotten plenty of emails and phone calls ourselves to this effect. And we've gotten concerns of driver inattention, speed issues, failure to stop at the crosswalk. We think that some of these crosswalk improvements will help. Our pedestrian inattention, we have people crossing the side of the crosswalk not paying attention, not watching the cars, not making eye contact with the drivers. We have drop-offs all over the place out there. We've got illegal U-turns going on. We've got jaywalking going on. We've got parking in red zones. We've got bus parking in places that block vision. We hope we solve some of that problem with moving the zones away from, the parking zones and the dropping zones away from the crosswalk. And we're also looking at the conflicts that we have out there with bikes, the lack of a bike lane in the southbound lane. I know that's been an issue that's been brought up quite a bit. And we're also looking at the two-hour parking zones in the neighborhoods. It's this plan that we had to have no parking in the neighborhoods adjacent isn't really working. What essentially happens, the kids come and they move their cars every two hours. So that's a problem for the local neighbors. And we're also looking at trying to get better use of the parking on the school site, along with maybe some increased lighting in the whole frontage of the school to improve better, get better safety. We have streetlights out there now, but the idea is maybe we can bring in LED lights. So the idea is over the next few months, we're going to meet with the school officials, keep working, come up with some ideas, some potential solutions, bring them back to the community, and vet them, and see what shakes out, and then hopefully we'll be able to talk to you and to our counterparts in the school district about maybe funding and implementing some of these solutions. So that's kind of where we're at. You got any questions?
I would just like to thank staff for keeping on top of this and keeping it in front of us so that it just doesn't become an activity on the shelf and that we just keep moving on the implementation. Thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Potem Curry?
I was privileged to attend the opening this weekend of the Richard Deepencorn exhibit at the Orange County Museum of Art, his Ocean Park series, which is really a very, very well-done, exquisite collection of modern art. I'm not a big modern art fan, but I enjoyed I'm not a big modern art fan, but I enjoyed this, and I would suggest that if you get out to the museum, you're going to enjoy it too. It premiered in Fort Worth, it's going to go to the Cochran Museum across the street from the White House when it leaves Newport Beach. So, we are very privileged to be able to have art of this quality in our community, and to have a resource such as the Orange County Museum of Art, so I encourage everybody to get out and to take advantage of it before it leaves in May.
Councilman Hen?
I just had one other announcement. This is an agenda item for later this evening, but I didn't want to pass the opportunity to point this out while we have everyone's attention here at the start of the meeting. This is a copy of the quarterly business report for the city of Newport Beach. It's just a fabulous document here for anyone that wants to stay abreast of what's happening in our city. It's produced quarterly, as the name implies, and it is really a pretty darn complete compilation of what's going on and how the city is doing. And I just want to commend staff that they do such a good job with this. It is such a valuable document, everyone should really have a look at it. It takes you about 30 minutes once a quarter to read it, and there's really no reason why any of our citizens shouldn't be able to be well-informed about their city with a document like this that's available. And so, I'd like to thank staff. This takes a lot of time and effort to produce, and it's very worthwhile.
It's also on the website if folks don't want, don't get a hard copy of it, too. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
We have a problem in Corona Del Mar, at least, and probably other areas with trash being, between the ravens and the raccoons, it gets strewn pretty badly. And so, we are doing a review of our trash services with, by a consultant. I've asked the city manager to include ideas on how we can improve that as part of the study. And I'm also asking at this point that for a future study session, we do a review of our committees and commissions. I know that some of them still, we, we update them, and we need to remove some of them, and also the way we select membership, I think it'd be a fruitful discussion.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 17, are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Hill?
None, thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No items.
Councilwoman Diggle?
Number 17 is the 19th Street Bridge. Sue and the others, did you want that polled, or?
Not if you had the intention.
Okay, I think, I'm not pulling it, but, okay, thank you.
You're not?
Unless they wanted to.
All right. Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Councilman Selich?
I have nothing to pull, but I want to record a no vote on item number four.
And I have nothing, staff? Is there anything you wish to pull?
No, no, ma'am.
Is there anything a member of the public would like to pull? Please come forward if there is. All right, thank you. I have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would move the adoption of the consent calendar items 1 through 17 with the Councilman Selich voting no on item four.
Please vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Prior to reading the votes, I have many resolution and ordinance titles to read. For item three, Resolution Number 2012-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach establishing no parking restrictions on designated streets on specific days and times to improve street sweeping effectiveness and rescinding Resolution Number 2012-3. Item four, ordinance number 2012-6, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 11.04 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to parks, park facilities and beaches and repealing Section 11.08.080 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to smoking on city beaches. Item five, ordinance number 2012-7, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment number CA 2011-010 for property located at 1419 Superior Avenue. Item six, ordinance number 2012-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a zoning code amendment to change the zoning designation of property located at 514 East Oceanfront. Item seven, ordinance number 2012-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment number CA 2011-011 for properties located at 2888 and 2890 Bay Shore Drive. And item nine, ordinance number 2012-4, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving Plan Community Development Plan number PC 2008-001 for property located at 1600 East Coast Highway. Would that, the motion carries unanimously?
Thank you. And now, public comments. Madam Clerk, do you want to?
Yes, I do. Let me go back to the agenda here. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes before speaking. Please state your name for the record.
Hold on just a minute. Can we ask them to either close the doors or move outside for their conversation? Thank you. All right, please go ahead.
My name is Debbie Kokan, and I'm a member of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. I just wanted to thank the council for sending the letter about doing further study on the 19th Street Bridge issue. And I just wanted to mention that there will be very little necessity for mediation if the 19th Street Bridge is removed from the plan, if the Banning Ranch development does not go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I make just a quick comment to that? I had requested that item be on the chamber, on the agenda, and I appreciate the staff-recommended approach, which is essentially to study, you know, what would happen if we didn't have 19th Street Bridge, what would be the impacts, how would we mitigate it. So, it's not only good government, but it's also a required internal process of OCTA for them to consider removing that improvement, that they'd have to know what the mitigations and the impacts are. So, thank you.
Is there other public comment? Seeing none? Or reports from the City Council? Councilwoman Diggle?
Yes, the city manager, the city attorney, myself, the John Wayne Airport staff, and I think probably three citizens from Newport Beach went to the FAA in Hawthorne last week, and the purpose of the meeting was to get the FAA's response to a proposal by the citizens. So, this was not a proposal that was sanctioned by the city council or offered by the city council. And so, the FAA's response was essentially that they have changed the ESTRL procedure several times and to make a third modification. They did not find that the proposed modification would be kind of zigzagging down the back bay was going to be safe. And so, they stressed that, you know, the FAA's job is to get, you know, lots of people to Las Vegas on time and safely. So, they were not supportive of the proposal. However, they did indicate that they have been in daily contact with the air traffic controllers that make the calls on the flights as they turn back. So, you're heading towards Catalina and turn back inland, and that they have encouraged and directed those flights to stay out there so that it does not, so it minimizes the impact of the noise over Corona Del Mar. So, that was a progress, we felt, with the FAA. However, they were very stern that there will be no more changes to the ESTRL departure. And so, it was a good meeting, and we really have tried, to a great extent, to have good relations with the FAA. They control what's going on at that airport, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
Three reports. The Tidlins Committee met on February the 15th, and the agenda included three items of significance, including a report from the Citizens Advisory Group of the Tidlins, which has been charged with coming up with a recommendation for prioritizing Tidlins projects. And that was an interim report, they're going back to do some more work. I expect their final report will be made available to the Tidlins Committee at the next meeting. And then, we also had a presentation regarding charter boat activity in Newport Harbor. That was an interesting update on the extent and activities of the charter industry in our harbor. And following that report and some discussion, the Tidlins Committee felt that it did not warrant further action. With regard to the Tidlins Infrastructure Management Plan, we discussed reorienting that plan, this is the master plan for the harbor and its improvement. We discussed reorienting that plan more along the lines of a 10-year plan, and with a focus on the capital improvement projects associated with the plan as distinguished from maintenance and other activities and environmental. And so, I expect that we'll see a reorganization of that at the next meeting as well. It's one of the fundamental purposes of our committee to establish a master plan for our harbor. And then, the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee met on February the 16th. The one agenda item of significance had to do with a review of the Corona Del Mar entry plan, that's on the agenda for this evening. The Tidlins Committee did review that and took a lot of public comment and...
You mean the Revitalization Committee?
I'm sorry, Revitalization Committee. And recommended that for approval by council this evening. And then, lastly, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Harbor Charges met on February the 23rd with a group of the largest 15 commercial marina operators here in the harbor to discuss the committee's initial views about how harbor fees might be reorganized for use of the Tidlins, these are fees for the use of the Tidlins by these marina operators. And essentially, the approach is to change from a regimen of annual permit approvals at what is, by all accounts, an extremely low and below-market price today, to a long-term lease approach for the use of Tidlins, and to orient that approach as a percentage of revenue that the marina operators earn, with a recommended level of 20% of revenue coming to the city. There are other issues of significance regarding how the city proposes to approach that, or at least the Ad-Hoc Committee. And we had a lot of good input, it was a very good discussion, and the Harbor Fees Committee will take that input, along with staff, and assimilate that into a recommendation to come before council for full public review and review by the entire council before action is taken. And I hope that that will occur in the month of March. This is one step along the path of a work plan for the Harbor Fee Committee that is charged with reviewing the entire fee structure in the harbor for use of Tidlins. And that is itself, that entire work plan, is a part of a larger plan that council is focused on to really manage our harbor for the long run to a higher and better level than it has been in the past. And so, there's a lot of work here. The Harbor Fee Committee, once it completes its review of commercial peer leases, will be moving on to other harbor fee uses, including residential peers and others. And so, with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Councilman Selich?
No reports this evening.
Councilman Hill?
No reports.
Councilman Rosansky?
No reports, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
One of my roles with the Association of California Cities of Orange County is to chair the Innovations in Government Committee that's been formed by that organization, and I'm pleased to say that we had our first meeting. We've got broad participation from several cities, and we're beginning, we're doing some research to highlight what cities throughout Orange County, indeed throughout California, are doing to innovate, to reduce cost, and to make government more efficient. And that will ultimately accumulate in a report, and I look forward to being part of that project.
Thank you. I have nothing. And we're now into the public hearings. Number 18, the review for the Pacific View Memorial Park Development Agreement.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Gardner. Ms. Fern Nueno is going to give the presentation on both this annual review of the development agreement with the Pacific View Memorial Park and the following agenda item, which is for North Newport Center. And I just want to give her one moment to get set up with her PowerPoint provision. These are both annual reviews of existing development agreements. The annual review is required by our municipal code, and it just ensures that there's compliance by the, by the party in terms of complying with the different conditions that are set forth in the development agreement. And with that, I believe Ms. Nueno is ready.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner, councilmembers. Fern Nueno, Planning Division. The first development agreement review is for Pacific View Memorial Park. The municipal code does require that the city council periodically review the development agreements to determine if the applicant has complied in good faith with the development agreement. The last review for Pacific View was done in May of 2011, and at that time, the city council found the Pacific View Memorial Park to be in compliance with the development agreement. Since the last review, there's been no construction activity, and Ruby Lewis from the Pacific View Memorial Park is here if you have any questions.
Have any questions to staff? All right. Does this make a motion to accept?
I would move to receive and file, I guess, is that what we do?
Yes, receive and file.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Do we, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to do a different motion?
It says receive and file on the agenda.
Yeah, I believe it also says, you find the applicant to have complied in good faith and complied with the development agreements. May just move, move the recommendation.
I'll move the, move the recommended action. And I would, I would, by the way, thank the Pacific View people because it's an example of where people have been working with the neighbors and doing a good job in fulfilling the promises that were made.
Is there a second to this reworded motion?
Second.
Fine. Any, just further discussion by council? Is there any public comment on this matter? And please vote. The motion carries unanimously? Thank you. And now, for the North Newport Center Development Agreement?
Madam Mayor, while Ms. Nueno is getting ready for that presentation, I do want to just indicate that there were two correspondents received today on this public hearing item. One was from Mike Leonard, who is the Director of Real Estate for 24 Hour Fitness, and the other one was from Karen Trigali, representing the Corona Del Mar Association.
We're too fast tonight, sorry. The second annual view is for the North Newport Center Planned Community. The planned community actually includes multiple blocks that were not a part of the planned community when the development agreement was approved in 2007. So, this exhibit shows the four blocks that are a part of the development agreement review today. At the last review, city council did find that Irvine Company was in good faith, compliance with the development agreement. And for North Newport Center, the reviews are typically done at the beginning of the year to review the activity from the previous calendar year. In 2011, there was some construction done in Fashion Island, oh, sorry, Dave, and in Block 600, most notably the building at 650 Newport Center Drive, which is the new office building going in there. And also in 2011, city council did approve a transfer of development rights between Blocks 500, 600, and San Joaquin Plaza. Now, for transfers of development rights, that could be transfer of entitlement, and that sometimes includes transfers of built square footage. And in those cases, the square footage is considered suspended to be demolished. And the, I think Kim, or Kim mentioned earlier, there was a issue that came up with the 24 Hour Fitness facility, and this application before you tonight, there are, this is just a review of the development agreement. And in order to address the suspended square footage issue, staff is proposing that the city council authorize the community development director to enter into a covenant on behalf of the city to address this suspended square footage for the transfers that have been done previously. Now, the original, one of the original transfers in 2007 did discuss the 24 Hour Fitness facility, and that is not the only option available. The Irvine Company has the option of transferring entitlement back into Block 600. The decision tonight doesn't necessarily mean... The, the decision tonight doesn't necessarily mean that 24 Hour Fitness will be demolished.
But it also doesn't, if we go ahead with it, then they can do what they want, can't they? They, they don't have to come back to us and say, well, we really are going to do 24, demolish that building or close it or whatever.
Well, the transfer was originally approved in 2007, transferring out some of the entitlement for not only 24 Hour Fitness, but the Palms Court and some of the office space. That was approved by the council in 2007 and then subsequent transfers have been approved. If you do allow the community development director to enter into the covenant on behalf of the city, uh, we will work it out. Staff could work it out. And it won't necessarily mean that, that 24 Hour Fitness can be or will be demolished. It's really a decision between Irvine Company and their tenant. And Shawna Schaffner is here from, or to represent Irvine Company if you have further questions.
All right. Are you, are you through with your report, Fern?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Are there questions of staff? Is there a public comment on this item?
Ms. Shawna Schaffner is here to represent the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner, members of the council. I'm Shawna Schaffner from CAA Planning on behalf of Irvine Company. Unfortunately, Dan Miller couldn't be here this evening. We agree with the report provided by staff on the AMR, but I would like to address the 24 Hour Fitness issue. The square footage associated with 24 Hour Fitness was identified in 2007, along with other square footage, as square footage that would either need to be demolished or converted to a non-habitable use when additional office square footage was developed in North Newport Center. The information in front of you this evening outlines how this square footage could be converted to a non-habitable use. The council's action in 2007 did not identify specific measures for converting square footage to non-habitable uses. And so that is what we have presented this evening in the annual monitoring report in the form of a covenant that the city would enter into. Uh, the community development director could do that on behalf of the city with the Irvine Company. Uh, so, as I said, the item before the council this evening is not an action to close the 24 Hour Fitness, but rather to confirm that the procedures that we've identified for converting square footage to non-habitable uses are acceptable to the council. Uh, there are a variety of options that would allow the square footage associated with 24 Hour Fitness to remain open, both in the short term and in the long term. In the short term, a non-habitable use agreement could identify alternate square footage within North Newport Center that would be converted to a non-habitable use in order to keep open 24 Hour Fitness. In the long term, a transfer of development rights could be, could be applied for by the Irvine Company to identify alternate square footage, which would again keep open 24 Hour Fitness. So there are several options here.
Well, I'm not a member, so, but I know it is a popular, uh, gym, so that if we can do something to encourage this, it would be great.
Yeah, Irvine Company believes they have several years, uh, in which to work this out because there is significant unbuilt square footage remaining in North Newport Center. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
All right, thank you. Um, is there a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Mayor? I did have public comment.
I haven't, I haven't asked for public comment yet. I will.
I did second it.
All right. Is there any further discussion at this point from council? No, all right. Public comment, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Robert Hawkins, I had understood that earlier, prior to when Ms. Schaffner stood up, you asked for public comment at that time. So that was the reason I came down here and tried to interrupt your motion. I apologize. First, um, let's take a look. Take a look at your graphic here. It is actually incomplete because they proposed to take out 7,400 square feet in Block 100. Well, you don't see Block 100? Thank you. But that's not, uh, that's not circled in yellow. So let's make sure we've, and now 7, 7,400 square feet in Block 100, there are nine office buildings, nine office structures there. There's nine buildings there. It goes from 110, which is where I have a tenancy, to 190. Now, I do not believe the entirety of those nine office buildings is 7,400 square, 74,000 square feet. I believe there's an overage there, which means that the city's going to have to monitor what, what offices are occupied, what offices are not occupied, unless the covenant is specific as to floors, uh, offices, and so forth. I mean, for instance, 110 Newport Center Drive has about 4,000, 4,000 square feet of abandoned office space. That office space, it seems to me, could be the subject of the ten, the covenant. And at that point, the city doesn't have to monitor. But the way that I read the staff report and the agreement is that none of this stuff is nailed down. So that the city code enforcement's going to have to rifle through the entirety of Block 100 in order to figure out if there's compliance or not with this non-habitability. So, thank you very much, madam.
Thank you. Uh, staff, a, a comment on that?
Uh, Mayor Gardner, that is something that will be very specific. I think that, uh, Mr. Hawkins has a very good point, that we want to make it very clear as to which space is non-habitable so that, um, we at staff are clear and, and the Irvine Company. So that is something, a detail that will be worked out with the covenant.
All right. Any other public comment on this item? Any further discussion? Then let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. And now continued business for the Santa Barbara condominiums, affordable housing implementation plan and memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner. This is another, um, agreement between the city and the property most commonly referred to as the Santa Barbara condominiums. This was continued from your meeting of February 14th to allow some additional refinement to the, to the agreement. Associate Planner Jaime Mario is going to give the overview of the proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present the, uh, proposed amendment to the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan and Proposed Memorandum of Agreement, associated with the previously approved Santa Barbara condominiums project. Provide a little history. Uh, the project was approved by the city council in January of 2006. Uh, the project is located, um, here where the existing Newport Beach Marriott Hotel Tennis Court Complex is located. The project would involve subdividing the land and developing 79 residential condominium units. The units would be divided into five separate buildings. Each building would consist of three to four levels of residential over a subterranean level of parking. Uh, it's also important just to point out that since the original council approval in 2006, um, there's been a number of other subsequent approvals associated with the project. Uh, because the project is located in the coastal zone, uh, the project required the approval of a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission, uh, which was a long, somewhat drawn-out process. Uh, one of the, um, recommendations and requirements from the Coastal Commission was that the city actually amend the coastal land use plan to include a program where the development would be required to pay a $5 million fee to the Coastal Commission for public benefits and, or, sorry, visitor serving uses for Crystal Cove State Park. Associated with that approval, um, the city entered into an agreement with the applicant at the time, uh, which was memorandum of understanding. And that was approved on August, uh, 2007. That MOU essentially stated that the parties would enter into a future development agreement where the developer would receive vested development rights in exchange for an additional $5 million public benefits fee to be paid to the city. Also associated with that approval, the city approved an Affordable Housing Implementation Plan that fulfilled the project's affordable housing, uh, requirements, uh, which were conditions of approval. In that Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, um, the developer was to fulfill their housing obligations by converting a 12-unit marketway apartment building and, um, converting the units to affordable housing, or affordable rental units for moderate income households for a period of 30 years. And eventually, in September of 2009, the, uh, the project received approval from the Coastal Commission, uh, which became its official effective date for all the associated project approvals. And just to clarify, the current expiration date of the project approvals is September 5th, 2014. Uh, but the two issues, um, in front of us tonight is, uh, a new request from the New Home Company, which is the, the current applicant. They're in the process of purchasing the property and are proposing to develop the project. The first request is an amendment to the approved Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. They're unable to reach an agreement with the owners of the apartment building that were proposed to be converted to affordable housing. And therefore, they're proposing to fulfill their affordable housing obligations by paying an affordable housing in-lu fee, uh, which is consistent and allowed for under the city's current inclusionary housing requirements and housing program 2.2.1. The current fee is $20,544 per dwelling unit, which would equate to approximately $1.6 million in total fees that would be deposited into the city's Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, the city would then take the burden and responsibility of using that money to develop, convert, or preserve affordable housing in the city. Uh, there are a number of benefits. Uh, the city could then partner with an affordable housing developer, nonprofit, um, developer to, uh, develop an affordable housing project. Uh, we could leverage our funds and secure additional funds through tax credits or, um, affordable housing grants to get a better affordable housing project, uh, and possibly deeper affordability and meet some of the city's lower-income housing needs. Uh, the other benefit would be, uh, we have control over how the money's spent and, um, could use it for a project that would actually give the city credit under the state's regional housing needs allocation goal. Uh, the second part of the applicant's request is a proposed memorandum of agreement. Uh, this agreement would supersede the prior memorandum of understanding with the previous applicant. It would incorporate the provisions of the amended Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. And most importantly, it would waive the requirements of a development agreement. Uh, the city council has the option of waiving the development agreement if the project provides, um, public benefits and if there's no, um, if the city or the applicant would not gain anything through entering into a development agreement. Uh, in this case, the applicant's not seeking any vesting of development rights, however, they are committing to paying the $5 million public benefits fee to the city. Uh, additionally, um, that memorandum of agreement addresses and clarifies that the city would allow phasing of the project and issuance of separate building permits and also allows for the installation of a temporary sales trailer. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the draft resolution, uh, which would include the amendment of the AIP, uh, approval of the memorandum of agreement, the waiver of development agreement, and their, for sending in a resolution number 2007-058, which is what originally proved the memorandum of understanding. And that concludes my report.
Questions for staff? Councilman Selich.
Yeah, can you tell me, uh, how much this project's going to generate in park fees?
It'll generate, oh, you know, let me calculate it out really quick. Yeah, just a li, a little over $2 million. Thank you.
Um, other questions of staff?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilwoman Dagle?
Um, as far as the 1.6 million, the additional 1.6 million that's going into this in-lu housing fee, and I assume we have other funds in that fund, other monies?
That's correct. We currently have approximately 1.5 million in the fund today.
Um, and we have to respond to regional housing need. And when I look at Newport Beach, where this narrow band of premium real estate, developing land is very difficult because of environmental constraints, you know, on many properties. And yet, um, Irvine, um, City of Irvine, the Irvine Land Trust was honored about a week ago. I went to an event and I was speaking with one of the council members there and they expressed a real interest in working with Newport Beach. And, you know, they're actively, proactively developing projects there. And I mentioned to them that we had funding, um, but we're built out, we don't have a lot of vacant land. So I'm wondering, um, if that's something staff can look at is collaborative opportunities with Irvine in terms of maybe, you know, having the project there and we somehow get credit for it. I think they might be open to that.
Are we allowed to do that?
Councilmember Dagle, that has always been a, a subject of discussion, is whether or not a jurisdiction could get credit for affordable housing located outside of their city boundaries. And the state law does not allow that at this time. So, um, we'd be happy to work with them if they would like to do a project within our corporate boundaries. But we do actually have some interested people or parties to do affordable projects within the community. And having an affordable housing in-lu fee bank available does act as an incentive. So we will continue to pursue, um, opportunities with developers and, and bring them forward to the council.
So what, what, can you provide a little bit more detail in terms of these, um, efforts that are underway?
Well, there, there are several, um, processes available or opportunities where Jaime was, uh, highlighting that we could use the bank to, um, prolong existing affordable housing projects that are at risk currently. That's one option. Another option is to use it as an incentive for an affordable housing developer who is interested in, in developing within the community, where that could help possibly buy down the cost of the land or, or, or be used in terms of helping them get tax pri, credit financing. So those are two options that we are actually looking at at this point. When we have something definitive, we'll come back to council to get direction.
Okay, I'd, I'd appreciate that. I know I'm very familiar with the different strategies and how to do it. It, it just seems like getting a project has been a long time coming, so.
That's true, yeah.
Also, ACOG has a, a subcommittee, a RAINA committee, that's trying to work on getting laws changed so that communities can cooperate in, in these things. That's probably a long way off. Any other questions of staff? I, I have a couple. The, the $5 million that they comes to the city, what's the trigger for that?
It'll be paid upon the issuance of building permits for each of the units.
Is it also going to be phased, the payment?
Um, as they pull a building permit for each unit, they'll pay a, a portion of the fee.
Okay. And then, uh, they ask us to waive the development agreement. Is there anything that we are giving up by that? Do you feel, are there things that we would demand under a development agreement that we do not have already?
I don't think so. Um, under the previous memorandum of agreement, the public benefit to be paid, uh, under the development agreement was the $5 million public benefits fee, which we'll continue to receive.
Okay. City Attorney?
I have, uh, one quick point to add. I think that, um, we were making revisions to the agreement up to the last minute and one thing that was neglected is that HHR Newport LLC should be a party to that agreement. So when you consider this matter, uh, when you make the motion, that's one item we'd like to add, to have them add as a party to the agreement. They're also in agreement with that proposal, um, subject to review by our office.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have to clarify a point. Um, the payment of the public benefits fee to actually be paid upon the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the units.
Oh, all right, all right, thank you. Public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Robert Hawkins, Friends of Dolores. We have commented on the environmental and we continue to believe that the environmental, since it was, uh, approved in 2006, and it is now 2012, is stale and needs revision. But, and we have provided some written comments, not a lot, because of the time constraint. But, but I think it's more important to focus on the development agreement or the memorandum of understanding. And, uh, first of all, I'm glad the city attorney record, recognized that although, uh, HHR was not a signatory of this agreement, it needed to be. So that is something that we were wondering where that was. Because they are able to assign this agreement without being a party to it. So that did seem a little weird. But I think we need to look at the assignability of this, uh, agreement. Now bear with me. Uh, New Home and HHR, subject to the provisions of section 6.1 below, shall have the right to assign its rights under this memorandum of agreement without the city's consent. In other words, we do not get any ability to override that, to understand- In other words, we do not get any ability to override that, to understand who is doing this, and so forth. Now, with respect to the payment of the fees, Mr. Murillo is correct. Let me see. That is on page five at paragraph 3.3. That is paid upon a prorata basis upon the issuance of each certificate of occupancy. Now, what we need to look at is the memorandum of agreement between Lennar and the city. That was quite a different thing. First of all, you can look on page, handwritten, page 68, paragraph one, that... Sorry, paragraph two, that agreement required the city and the developer to enter into a development agreement, an actual development agreement, not some memorandum. But secondly, and this is more important, the order of payment was markedly different from this proposal. And I'm reading from Section 2A of that earlier agreement. "The amount shall be paid in two installments. The first installment, $2 million to be delivered concurrently with the first residential building permit." Okay, that's early on in the process. And then the $3 million is delivered concurrently with the issuance of the final occupancy permit. So there was... Under the original agreement, there was a requirement for a development agreement, and there was this phasing of payment. Now, all of a sudden, we get the monies somehow down at the end, when the certificates of occupancy are issued. I think these are things that need to be looked at. In addition, I think you need more time on this. Obviously, these changes to the memorandum of understanding are new. The city attorney's office noted that we needed to add a signatory to the agreement. There's no telling what else needs to be added. Thank you very much.
No, just one question. The Friends of Doris, is that the group from up in Northern California?
No, no, no. This is Friends of Dolores.
I mean, Friends of Dolores is from up in Northern California?
No, it is not. It's a Southern California group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the Dolores and the Dolores? Friends of Dolores? Is it an individual that...
These are friends, so... And it's an unincorporated group. We'll be happy when we file, if we file any action, we'll be happy to identify the principles. Obviously, we will need to verify the complaint, so that will be on the petition as well. So, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In addition to the possible discrepancies pointed out by Mr. Hawkins, I would like to point out the figure of a payment of one point, or generation of revenue of $1.6 million going into the Affordable Housing Fund as an in lieu fee, as been mentioned here in the presentation, and by the council. But when I look at the resolution on handwritten, that you're being invited to pass here on handwritten, page 11, it says it's going to generate, it's going to add $1.2 million to the Affordable Housing Fund, and since that's $400,000 less than the figure we're hearing here, I'm wondering what happened to the $400,000. This may seem a strange suggestion, but with regard to the $2 million worth of park fees, I would suggest the council might consider using that for acquiring Banning Ranch, which is one of the general plan options. It wouldn't be a big piece, but it would be a little piece, help for that. And finally, with respect to the coastal development permit that we heard was approved in September of 2009, I've actually been by this property, and the announcement of that meeting is still hanging there on a great big sign in a tree. So apparently, the property owner hasn't been by in a long time. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Councilwoman Dagle.
Can you clarify the $1.2 million to the $1.6 million issue?
Yes, it's a typo, handwritten page 11 within the resolution. It should state $1.6 million.
Councilman Selig?
I'll move the staff recommendation on this with the city attorney's edition of HHR as a signatory on it.
I'll second that.
You know, there are some changes in the timing of the payments on this project, but I think we have to recognize we're in troubled economic times, and it's very difficult for projects like this to get financing and get off the ground, and we're looking at $7 million of revenue to the city here, so I think it's well worth staging out these payments a bit in order to get the revenue for the long-term benefit of the city.
What about the point that the assignability is without the city's consent? Is that something that we should be concerned about? There are builders and builders.
I'm going to go ahead and have Ms. Mulvihill respond to that question.
Evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The assignability provision was added at the request of the New Home as well as Host. One thing to point out is that as to the assignment, really the right, which is being conveyed from the city, is really a right to pay fees at specific intervals, as well as a $5 million benefit fee. Again, the critical thing is this is not a development agreement. This is not a vested right. So because of that, it didn't seem as important to the city, as long as the person who was constructing the units and pulling the building permits was indeed paying the fee. Certainly is a policy decision on the part of the council if you feel that that's important, but that was the topic of discussion when we were negotiating this, both with New Home and, more recently, with Host, the property owner.
All right. Councilman Selig?
Well, I'm not particularly concerned about the assignability here. You saw the permits expire in 24 months. This applicant's going to have a difficult time just going through and getting his plans drawn and meeting the current schedule for when the permits expire, so I don't think it's a big issue.
All right, is there any other discussion? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution title. Resolution Number 2012-19, a resolution of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, approving an Affordable Housing Implementation Plan and memorandum of agreement and waiving the requirement of a development agreement for the Santa Barbara condominium project at 900 Newport Center Drive. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, now, number 21, the reconsideration for the Corona Del Mar Coastline Car Classic waiver of parking fees. Is there a staff report?
There is, if you'd like, one, Mayor Gardner and councilmembers. This is a return to an item that, actually, Councilmember Selig asked for this. I hope we... I hope the staff report is fairly self-explanatory, but we would appreciate the clarification today as well as to whether or not the proposal that sets forth, basically a three-year proposal with a specific formula focused on the average weekend's use. It's fairly complex, but I understand it, and as long as I can tell it to other people, I think it'll work. But I'd welcome your comments and questions on that.
All right, is there... Any comments or... Councilman Selig?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve this for a three-year agreement.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion at this level? All right, public comment, please.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I spoke about this when it was on the agenda before, so I don't really need to repeat myself. I just think this is way too complicated. The city has a parking lot. We charge $15 for space. Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce wants to use 500 spaces. The price for that is $7,500. That's what we should be charging for them. If the city, if the Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce wants assistance in paying that, we, you, the council, established last year the Special Events Advisory Committee process for doing that. They should apply through that process, get a grant, and use the grant to pay the fees. I thought we were moving away from making these arbitrary and complicated fee waiver agreements with people or organizations. So I just think it's completely contrary to your process, to the process that you're trying to establish. It would be appropriate to let them make a late application for this year's CAC applications, but I don't think waivers are the way that you're trying to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Before we vote, Mr. City Manager, I would also like a study session item, not on this particular thing, and I'm not suggesting we change what CAC is doing for this year, but I, for one, am not happy with the whole process, and I would like us to look at it again, but this way we could do it sooner rather than later and have a whole year. If we do want to make changes, and if I'm the only one, then we don't have to worry about it, but I would like some more discussion on this.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Selig?
Yeah, I just wanted to go on the record that I'm voting in favor of this, and I'm not voting on it as a fee waiver. It's a rental agreement for the parking lot.
Thank you for the clarification.
Actually, I'll go on record that way, too, because I think we do have a process, and everybody should follow the process, but on the assumption that this is the city entering into an agreement and not a fee waiver.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously?
All right. Current business, appointments to fill the vacancies on the Citizens Bicycle Safety Committee. Is there any presentation on this from the staff?
I can do a brief one. The ad hoc committee was appointed on January 10th of this year. The city clerk's office posted the vacancy notice on the 11th and published it on January 14th. Applications were due to my office on January 27th. Interviews were conducted Wednesday, February 8th, and there initially were 14 nominees. However, one of them requested that their name be removed from consideration.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff? As a member of the public, any comments? Public comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner, members of the council, my name is Frank Peters. Francis Peters on your agenda. I am honored to be nominated to... for your consideration tonight for the Bike Safety Committee. As you know, there was an interview process, and I applied and went through the interview, and I remember at one point during the interview, Councilman Dagle asked me a tough question, and as I look back, I feel like I dodged the answer. She spoke to me of my frustrations, having been on the task force and been a frequent participant in the Bike Safety Committee. I've given it a lot of thought since that point, and as I come up here tonight, I want to make a point about much of my role involved with Bike Safety Committee is to seek the advice of others. And as I stand up here, I think of Councilman Rosansky as I think of my frustration. More and more, as I ride my bike in Newport Beach, I have to apply more and more sunscreen to the top of my head. So, no, but more seriously, in the past few years...
No, you're always wearing a helmet, Frank.
Let the record show, Councilman Rosansky said, "Ride more at night." Happy to do that. In the past few years...
I think I said, "Wear a hat."
Oh, "wear a hat."
He said, "Wear a hat," yeah.
But riding more at night would work.
All right. So I did experience frustrations as I got involved. This is my first experience dealing with the city. And I took myself to task at one point when I realized that no one really saw me as a bicycle safety expert, and really, what credentials did I have? So I set about on a different path, and that is to take myself on the road and go visit different cities around the country. I have interviewed bike safety experts, city staff, bicycle planners in cities. I can remember just a few: Seattle, Boston, Washington, DC, Tucson, Santa Cruz, Portland, Long Beach, San Diego. Just today, I published an interview from a bicycle advocate in San Diego, seeking their advice, and what I do is I record their live voices, put that on my blog, such that other people in the community can learn as well. I'm trying to influence public opinion and create a better environment for cyclists. Well, does that make a difference? I can tell you this, that along the way, over the past couple of years, I've met several other people in the community who I'm very proud to now call friends. People that are also on your list today, Eric Cord, David Huntsman, Sean Matzler, John Zinberg, have all responded to the interviews that I've done, the people that I've spoken with, the blog posts that I contribute to the discussion. I recommend them for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. I need a motion to conduct an appointment pursuant to Council Policy A2, with the seven people receiving support from the majority of the council chosen as members to the committee.
So moved.
Any public comment on this motion? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we will vote by paper ballot, and the city clerk will tabulate and announce
I hope there's been no cribbing. Okay, for vote number one, Councilmember Rosansky voted for Michael Altie, Lou Cohen, Robert Kahn, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, Anthony Petros, and John Zeinberg. Councilmember Hill voted for Michael Altie, Lou Cohen, Robert Kahn, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, Anthony Petros, John Zeinberg. Councilmember Dagle voted for Michael Altie, Lou Cohen, Greg George, Robert Kahn, Frank Peters, Anthony Petros, John Zeinberg. Michael Hen voted for Michael Altie, Lou Cohen, Barbara Danzy, Robert Kahn, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, Anthony Petros. Councilmember Selig voted for Michael Altie, Eric Cord, Greg George, Robert Kahn, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, Anthony Petros. So that's seven. Mayor Protem Curry voted for Michael Altie, Barbara Danzy, David Huntsman, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, Frank Peters, and Anthony Petros. And Mayor Gardner voted for Michael Altie, Greg George, Robert Kahn, Sean Matzler, Frank Peters, and Anthony Petros. So for the first round, we have Michael Altie receiving seven votes, Lou Cohen receiving four, Eric Cord receiving one, Barbara Danzy two, Greg George three, David Huntsman one, Robert Kahn six, Dennis Labonge four, Sean Matzler six, Francis Peters three, Anthony Petros seven, and John Zeinberg three, so...
Would you recount the Dennis Labonge votes? Because I disagree with what I...
Did you count? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, five for Dennis Labonge. You're correct. So for the first round, Michael Altie is a member, Robert Kahn, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, and Anthony Petros. So that's five, so we need two more members. One, two. Okay, so we need one more member. Sorry about that. One, two, three, four, five, six. So again, Michael Altie, Lou Cohen received four, Robert Kahn, Dennis Labonge, Sean Matzler, and Anthony Petros. So we need, for round two, vote for one. Greg George and John Zeinberg each, oh, and Francis Peters each received three. Let me circle these real quick for you guys. George, Frank, and John. We vote for one.
One.
One more to select between Greg, Frank, and John. So only the three high voters. Vote for one, please.
Are you reading all of the apps again?
Is there something specific you're looking for? We might, since we do the interviews, help you?
At least the Cub Scouts have gone home, or the Boy Scouts.
Mayor, would you like me to... Mayor, would you like me to buzz him? Okay, for round two, Councilmember Hill voted for Frank Peters. Councilmember Rosansky voted for Greg George. Councilmember Daigle voted for John Zeinberg. Councilmember Hen voted for John Zeinberg. Councilmember Selich voted for Greg George. Mayor Protem Curry voted for Frank Peters. And Mayor Gardner voted for Frank Peters.
All right, so those are our seven, and Madam Clerk...
Two, three, two. We don't have a... It was two for Greg George, three for Frank Peters, and two for John Zeinberg. Yes, until someone gets... Well, it was three, two, two. No one got a majority vote.
Oh. Oh, you don't just have...
It's only two, three, two.
You don't just have the one who gets the most votes? It has to be majority?
It has to be majority.
Well, we could be here all night.
True.
All right. So we all switch, and it all comes out the same again.
Same members, Greg George, Frank Peters, or John Zeinberg.
Wait, we still have one.
No. It's all or nothing. Okay, round three. Councilmember Hill voted for Frank Peters. Councilmember Rosansky voted for Greg George. Councilmember Hen voted for John Zeinberg. Councilmember Daigle voted for Frank Peters. Councilmember Selich voted for Frank Peters. Keith Curry voted for Frank Peters. And Mayor Nancy Gardner voted for Frank Peters. Congratulations, Mr. Peters.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please prepare...
That's how you earn the vote, you show up, Frank.
I hope the Republican Presidential Convention goes easier than this.
Do the successful and unsuccessful nominees. And as Chair of the Committee, I think this is a wonderful combination. We've got some veterans back, and we've got some fresh faces, so it'll be an exciting year. We've got a lot of work to do. Item 23, the Corona Del Mar Entry Revitalization Concept. We have a staff report.
Madam Mayor, this is Kim Brant, Community Development Director. This is the fourth of the five revitalization plans that the City Council directed for staff to review in conjunction with citizens advisory panels. And we've been in this process since the summer of 2011. We did have a consultant help us with the Corona Del Mar Entry Plan, and his name is Dennis Stone, and he's going to provide an overview of the results of the process.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As Kim said, I'm Dennis Stone. I was the facilitator for the Corona Del Mar Entry Revitalization Plan, as well as for the West Newport and South Bristol Citizen Advisory Panels. This is the third that I've worked with, and it was a great group to work with. What we have is a presentation on the process, the conceptual plan, including several issues that were identified during the conceptual planning process that we wanted to bring to the council's attention. First of all, I wanted to thank Councilmember Hill, who was our council liaison, for facilitating. I know Mayor Gardner participated in one of the meetings as well. Our committee members Sandy Haskell, John Hyatt, Lisa Jordan, Bernie Smallstead, and Ron Yo, were also large contributors to the process. They had a lot of work to do. We had a lot of public comment at our meetings, and I think they did a great job in working through this. The city staff, Mike Sinicori was the lead from engineering, and then Ben Zadiva and Jim Campbell from planning. Our engineering consultant was Dave Bacon, and our landscape architect, Harry Cobsett from TCLA, who's done quite a bit of work in Newport Beach. A little bit of background, you know all of this, but maybe for the benefit of the folks in the audience, the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee kicked off five of these CAPs. This was one of those. It's focused on Corona Del Mar Entry Revitalization, primarily a gateway improvement, beautification process, to develop a conceptual plan, improve the pedestrian experience in that section of Corona Del Mar where MacArthur meets Coast Highway primarily. Its purpose was to develop this conceptual plan as a basis for future potential capital improvement projects. And so this conceptual plan is just that. It's a high-level concept that could be used to inform future actions potentially around capital projects and more specific projects. They then made a recommendation to the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. We held four CAP meetings to prepare the plan. Those then were presented to the NRC. And this month, on February 16th, the NRC approved the concept plan and moved it on to council, which we're here tonight to present. In large part, the process that we used was based on the Corona Del Mar Vision Plan from 2004. That plan was developed with extensive public outreach and consensus from the community, both the neighborhoods and the business community, lots of community support. There was significant business improvement district involved in the development of that plan, as well as the development of this concept plan. There was current bid funding that was used in part to fund some of the engineering and landscape architect work that was done to develop the concept plan as well. A conceptual plan is really about the look and feel, and this is kind of where we need to make some distinctions between this and more detailed level of planning. So this gives us some building blocks, major elements. It talks about the flexible use of space. It's not a detailed planning document. It doesn't define a project. It really just puts in place some ideas and concepts that can be used further later. It also, through the process and through the involvement of the public, it amplified some things that staff was already aware of in terms of some of the issues that need to be addressed, issues that already exist in the area, things that might be amplified were these concepts to be moved forward. So we've included those issues in the discussion in this presentation. This is the Vision 2004 Plan. As I mentioned, this was kind of a foundational document that the CAP used to inform its discussion on the conceptual plan, in specific focusing on this section here of the Corona Del Mar Entry at MacArthur and for a couple of blocks in either direction along MacArthur. And so while this level of planning gives some sense of the kinds of things that could be done, what the CAP needed and was provided with through staff and the consultants was some more detail on how this might actually come to be something that could be developed into a concept plan and ultimately into more detailed planning. And so with this document, we then started working downward through aerial photographs and laying out lanes and working with the engineers to see what kinds of things might actually work. And so where you have kind of a cartoon-level document that's very informative and helps to create some ideas, it needs to be developed further with some more detail. And that's where this process started, with this aerial view, which was then translated into a drawing that starts to show where you would gain some of the entry improvement areas, in this case primarily widening of the block between Begonia and Carnation, and then transitions between Acacia and Begonia, and then again between Carnation and Dahlia. And so what you start to see here is where the majority of the improvements might be made, and those are these bump-out areas that start to happen here, happen through here, and happen here, transitioning back again. One of the characteristics of the conceptual plan, what it did is it started identifying some issues in terms of where the lane drop starts to happen further up Coast Highway before MacArthur, and what happens to some parking that exists currently in the intersection. And we'll talk about that in a little more detail later in the presentation. From that, then, the landscape architect was able to start laying out some of the major elements of the plan, some of the kind of iconic pieces of the plan, including the palm trees, large palm trees, some of the lower canopy trees, some treatments potentially for the sidewalk areas, what might start happening at this kind of high level. And then that began to get translated into a more refined level of planning that included these pallets for different planning materials, ideas on things like a seating wall that could exist here along the area, opportunities for public art. This is the MacArthur intersection right here, so opportunities for public art and city signage along this area. The planning beds, the width of the sidewalk to be determined, those kinds of things started to take shape here. All of these elements in this level of planning are still conceptual, but even at this early stage in the planning, these things have been vetted with the folks from your maintenance departments to make sure we're not stepping into something that's going to be difficult or costly to maintain later on. So these are ideas that could be refined later if the projects, if the ideas were to move forward into projects. The best way to probably see what this starts to look like is to do some photo simulations, and we have a few of those. This is obviously looking into the current condition at the intersection at MacArthur and Coast Highway. And then if you overlay that with the ideas in the plan, you start to see something like this, where you've got these iconic palm trees. And just a note here is all of the work that was done, even at this conceptual level of planning, incorporated some of the commitments that the city's already made in terms of tree height, protecting views up on the hill. And so what you'll see is these palm trees are scaled to respect the former city manager's letter to the neighborhood that talked about a specific height requirement or limit for palm trees in the area. But on this, you'll see signage, entryway signage for the city and Corona Del Mar in particular. You'll see the planning beds. There's a low seating wall on the other side of this. The parking is gone from the intersection. And just to flip back and maybe reinforce a little bit what's happened here, that's the existing view, and then here's the simulation that overlays the concept plan into that area. So that's one look at it. There's a couple of other views, photosimulated views to show you. This is the existing condition looking through the intersection at MacArthur. This is one look at what it would look like, and this is just the enhancements that we're talking about from the concept plan. One of the ideas here was to create some flexible space. There's up to 21 feet of additional sidewalk space being provided here through the displacement of the parking. Even with that planting, it provides quite a broad area. And in this view, it's just open space for pedestrians to move up and down. We'll take another look at some of the possible uses that that flexible space might be used for. Oops, got two different controllers here. So again, this is our current view. And in this next view, you start to see the possibility for some tables and chairs outside. There's plenty of room to still move around. And then we'll go back once more to the current condition. One thing to look at, too, I'll point out, is if you look at this current curb line, and then when we go to the next view, see the shift in that, how much space is actually being created? And then this view shows maybe some temporary exhibits, kind of an art walk thing, things that might be done from time to time in the area to draw some visitors in and make the experience more enjoyable. And this lady likes it so much, she's here every single week to see that, what's going on down there. So those are some of the photosimulated views. Even though this is conceptual plan, there were some preliminary estimates done if this were to move forward. The idea to complete these, to go through a more detailed design process, was estimated at about $100,000. To complete construction, if all the ideas in here were implemented ultimately as projects, about $1.2 million, and the incremental annual maintenance cost of about $43,500 for the improvements. There were some issues that came up, and again, staff was aware of these kinds of things, but these things were amplified and discussed in detail both at the CAP meetings and again at the NRC meetings. And some of the things that came up, this plan does displace nine parking spaces that currently exist in the intersection at Coast Highway and MacArthur. The concept plan recognizes that, and everybody involved in the process, that parking is already a challenge in the area. There was an existing parking study that provided quite a bit of detail, block-by-block data collection. There's a lot of information about the parking situation in Corona Del Mar. It gets down to specifics, what blocks are most impacted. There were some recommendations made in that plan, including the suggestion for a one-year test program for several of the ideas that were in that plan. What the recommendation is that accompanies the concept plan is that these displaced spaces be considered in the larger context of the parking issues that exist in Corona Del Mar. And so just by, for example, finding nine other parking spaces, you still have significant issues dealing with parking in Corona Del Mar. And so the idea here is that these nine spaces are an issue that needs to be addressed, and that they will be addressed if and as the project moves forward through additional public discussion, through more detailed project design. There will be several public forums involved in this, including the potential for review with other agencies. But we did want to make sure that everybody understood that we're aware of the issue. We didn't attempt to solve it at the concept planning level. It wasn't an appropriate item for a CAP to address, but it's something that needs to accompany the concept plan as it moves forward through more detailed process. In addition to the parking, potential parking issues, there is a lane drop change, and the lane drop moves further up Coast Highway. And one distinction to make, and I think this is something that came up quite a bit during our discussions, and there's a difference between capacity issues and traffic flow issues. And capacity issues are kind of a technical way of dealing with the numbers that are involved. But what we're looking at here is more about traffic flow, and I think that's where most people are concerned, what happens to their experience in trying to move through this intersection if these kinds of changes were made. And what staff is recommending is that, in addition to the information that we've gotten by modeling this and the information that you've gotten by simulation that was conducted before, is that a more comprehensive simulation be conducted that would actually lay out the suggested lane lines from the concept plan. It would delineate them with cones and striping, and it would put something in place like that for a duration that's long enough to model through several cycles of different situations, using the CCTV, the closed-circuit television that's available for monitoring and analyzing that information, and then take that information and people's experience through a public process, understand really what the impacts would be potentially if these kinds of changes were made. And so rather than saying this is a problem itself because the capacity issue tells us it's not going to be a level of service issue, is to say, let's really simulate what's in this plan for a period that's long enough, and then analyze and discuss the data publicly as part of this ongoing process if this moves forward, and really see what's going to happen with it. So there was a lot of concern about the parking issues and the traffic issues. And in summary, what we're really saying is that this is a concept plan. If this goes forward, we need to make sure that the issues are addressed appropriately at the appropriate level and through a robust public conversation. level and through a robust public conversation about those issues. Finally, we want to talk a little bit about a preliminary process if this were to move forward. You see on here our date of the ad hoc NRC meeting on approval, this is tonight's meeting on the 28th. You've got your budgeting process, your CIP process, which is expected March through June is my understanding. If this concept plan were to become part of some funded budget for a portion or all of this, potentially even just the design portion of it, there would be about a six month expectation to review the parking issues, the traffic issues, to do some kind of a simulation study, to gain data on what the impacts would be. Following that, whatever level of environmental review would be appropriate, you'd have about a three-month process, and then from that, if things were successful there, about a three-month final engineering design bid package to go out to bid, and then for two and a half months, you'd have a process of reviewing and awarding bids before this ever reached any kind of a construction phase. And so there's nothing that's pushing this in the next couple of months, and we just wanted to make sure everybody understood kind of the length of time that would be involved, the steps, the additional public review periods that would be involved before this concept plan becomes something more definitive. And that concludes the presentation for the Corona Del Mar revitalization plan. Thank you.
Councilman Selig.
Dennis, you referenced the previous agreement with the homeowners on the tree height, but I think the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee went further than that, and our recommendation coming to the council that it would be, we would specify a maximum height for those trees, which was 32 feet. And I'll invite Councilman Hen and Hill to chime in on that, but I remember that being part of our recommendation, 32 feet.
Very definitely a part of the recommendation.
Yeah, I concur on that.
Any other questions or comments from staff? Mayor Pro Tim Curry.
First of all, it's a very interesting plan. The one thing that people sitting at home watching this are going to say or ask themselves is if we narrow the lanes, isn't it going to make traffic worse on Coast Highway going through Corona Del Mar? And just talk a little bit about that, because you alluded to it in terms of the distinction between traffic and traffic flow, or widening and traffic flow, and what comfort can you give residents that implementing this plan is not going to exacerbate traffic?
Hi, Dave Webb, Public Works. We have done an initial analysis of this plan, and we don't feel it's really going to have any, obviously, capacity increase, and we mentioned that in reports, it's at sea level now. Traffic flow, most of the time, we had an earlier test in this about a year and a half ago, two years ago, and we didn't see any problems then. We have had some concerns about southbound MacArthur going into eastbound Corona Del Mar and that little loss there into Carnation. I think we can work that out, I think, again, you're going to see that, Tony and I talked about this, our traffic engineer, and we saw that the backup really will be more stabilized as you come into it, and we wouldn't see that kind of conflict. What we're proposing is do that simulation again, but do it in terms of a more permanent, put in, for instance, a permanent stripe and maybe delineators for about a four-week period, take out the parking, let's see how it works. We're hopeful and we're pretty confident it's going to flow pretty well. You're always going to have those high periods of times when you're in summer, it's August or July, some of the systems will just melt down at five o'clock, and you're just going to have a little congestion, but most of the time it's going to work, we feel, so.
Councilwoman Daigle.
I have a question for you, Dave. We had an item on the agenda early this evening, 19th Street Bridge, and there's a lot of the public, a lot of the public, they just want it taken off the plan, but we're studying it, okay? So we're not concluding that it's the right thing to do, or if we do that, what the impacts are. Why are you recommending that we would not do our studies first, then approve a plan? I mean, it seems like we're being asked to approve the removal of, potentially the removal of parking spaces, you know, the removal of a lane that is anecdotally very convenient, and yet there's no really complete study to do it. Why would we not do the study first?
Well, actually, you're looking at approving a concept tonight that moves us forward towards that study, because our next step will be doing the review traffic-wise and also doing the environmental documents, which if those all work out and you agree with the mitigation, whatever's involved, then we'd actually move into plans. So at this point, you're really looking at just a concept, and we're just kind of giving your tentative feel on that concept. At this point, we think it should be positive.
With respect to the tables and chairs that are out there, that would be used as a public right of way for private profit, how does that work?
I don't believe we covered it fully, and again, in concept, there's an option that you could look in the future at some tables and chairs, you have an outdoor dining ordinance and requirement, you could look at how that fits in, the restaurant owners would have to apply for that, should the council want to go there. At this point, we just realized there's enough space so you could possibly put in some kind of chairs, limited function outside dining.
Any other questions for staff? Councilman Hill.
I would just like to make the comment that this plan really didn't start in January. This goes back many years in the work that was done that was community-based by the Business Improvement District, the Chamber, and the Chamber of Commerce, and even the residents' associations. I think it's a very exciting plan, I think it is truly an enhancement, and it brings forth all those kinds of things that we've been talking about ever since we created the EDC in the 90s. So I'm very supportive of the plan. That's not to say there are not issues that have to be resolved, and in fact, some earlier studies were run with cones and looking at the impact in earlier years, and while there are a half a dozen people that keep coming back and saying it's a disaster, it's a problem, there are experts that have looked at this and have said that it's not. And so I think that I'm very excited about moving forward with the project, I'm very excited that that process will bite off these elements that need to be studied in more detail as this moves from conceptual to a definitive plan, and I'm very anxious to keep the momentum moving forward on it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll open this probably comment.
My name is Patricia Ricks, I live on Begonia, which is one of the streets that would lose the, would have experienced the lane drop. I just wanted to, I actually was very appreciative of your questions, Councilwoman Daigle, and because you raised two issues that have most concerned the neighbors that I've talked to, and I will say that my neighborhood, our four blocks there of Acacia, Begonia, Carnation, and Dahlia, were, just became aware of this last week. So if it's been in discussion for longer than that, we, the people who live there, were not aware of it, and I hope that we will be made more aware of these discussions and be able to give our input. My biggest concern is the lane drop, and this is because when we come down MacArthur to Pacific Coast Highway, we have two options, one is to go right on Avocado and then turn left to get into our neighborhood. That's a dangerous option because we have one block to cross, four or five lanes of traffic. So we all take option two, which is to turn left and right on Carnation, and we use that merge lane to do that. And I think if you do conduct this lane study that you're proposing, you will see that that's what the neighborhood does, we use that lane to get into our neighborhood and to avoid the backup from PCH onto MacArthur in those busy times. And that's always a busy intersection, but there are times of day when even with two left turn lanes turning onto PCH, they, it just, traffic stops dead because they're just, PCH is backed up to MacArthur, and then you try to get the MacArthur traffic through, and there's nowhere to go. So we can go around to the right and still get home. So that's my point, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar. I work daily to try and beautify the city and keep it nice and clean, and I'm generally supportive of things that do that, beautify the city. I would have, I've been somewhat of a critic of this based on what happened at the intersection at East Coast Highway in Marguerite, where we originally had planned more of a plaza area, I believe, where Bandera is, there was going to be some underground parking there and maybe more of a landscaped area. And what we ended up with is a clock tower with a family's name on it, the clock doesn't keep time, it plays amplified music that I think most people don't enjoy or appreciate. The artwork there consists of finger painted tiles, one of them, three tiles wide, says tight quarters across it, which I think is inappropriate, another one states little insurance. And so I'm concerned that when we hear things about art and what have you, I just, I'm just concerned that we're going to have another situation like we have at Marguerite and East Coast Highway, that it's not going to be done quality, and I think it's going to require a lot more money than the million that you're talking about to really do it right. As you come into Corona Del Mar, it would be nice to have it a little nicer and more plants, but what I'm concerned about is having a City Newport Beach sign, a Corona Del Mar sign with a bunch of people drinking martinis behind it. I don't think, know that that sends the right message, I think dining is okay, but to have too much, just when you roll into town, a bunch of people drinking all the time, I don't know that that sends the right message. And finally, I'm trying to encourage the council to visit commercial waste haulers and commercial waste as you beautify and you expand restaurants and invite more people, we're going to have more and more waste, and we just, I'm constantly looking at the alleys and the commercial waste, and I'm encouraging to try to consolidate some of the waste, look at our waste haulers, we've got more and more trucks, you have more waste, more stinky trucks, and a lot of trips from that. So I know it's a touchy political subject, waste haulers and all the campaign contributions and everything, but we really, we really need to address commercial waste in this city. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Robert Hawkins. The first thing I want to point out, and I believe that Jim Mosher has already pointed this out, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate it. The Planning Commission shall have the power and be required to make recommendations to the City Council, this is a C, make recommendations to the City Council concerning public works like this, this hasn't gone to the Planning Commission, and for the clearance and rebuilding of blighted or substandard areas within the city. That is, the entire province of the Revitalization Committee should go, those recommendations should go to the Planning Commission, which then must make a recommendation to the City Council. That's what your charter says. Secondly, Mr. Stone has set out a timeline for which you will, after this, begin some sort of simulation studies. Now, it's unclear what those are, but at that point, you have a project, because the simulation will study a project. Now, what SEQA requires when you have a project is that you study it at the earliest possible moment, so that you don't put together these simulation studies based on a project that you know what you're going to do, and then later conduct environmental review. That environmental review needs to be conducted as soon as the project becomes identified. You will have identified that project with this simulation. So I don't necessarily object to the simulations, I don't, I think that they may be helpful, but what you need now is environmental analysis of the project's impacts. Mr. Stone was talking about project impacts, that's what the SEQA analysis is supposed to do. So, for instance, you can have a bunch of alternatives, you can have alternatives that push the lane down further into Corona Del Mar, or push it all the way back to Avocado, or narrow the sidewalks. The SEQA analysis will provide you with the opportunity to study alternatives, which you really haven't done yet. So I think you got a project, I think you're very, if you don't have a project, you're very close to having a project under SEQA, and it needs environmental review now. If you want to conduct these additional studies that Mr. Stone is talking about, that's fine, but I think tonight what you're going to be doing is approving a project, you're going to be approving that we're going to go forward with a project, and we need to do the environmental review, and that's fine, you need to do that. But at that point, you need to come back here, and everything's got to be up in the air, including the fact that the project could be denied. Now, with respect to Mr. Hill's comments that experts have opined that this is fine and good, well, I attended a lot of those advisory panels, I attended a lot of the revitalization committees, there wasn't one traffic study, not one traffic study. Now, you'll remember when we were doing the City Hall project, Joe Faust came here and said, "Well, we can put a median across San Miguel to limit the traffic for the City Hall project." Well, that didn't go anywhere, but at least we had somebody here that was talking about traffic. Here we're constricting a very congested intersection by truncating the lanes. The other traffic impact is the loss of the nine parking spaces. As indicated in your staff reports, the Planning Commission, and I believe the City Council, waived 50 parking spaces for the Avalos El Ranchito restaurant. That's right in this vicinity. Now, we're going to basically waive nine more parking spaces. You've got a big problem. This area is already congested, we need to make sure that we're doing those environmental studies as soon as you know what is happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron?
Yes, just briefly, in regards to the charter issue raised by Mr. Hawkins, under the charter, the Planning Commission doesn't have exclusive jurisdiction to make recommendations regarding public works projects, so he's misread the requirements of that charter section. Traditionally, the City Council has asked for input regarding the CIP projects, which comes to the City Council every year, I believe in May. As regards to the SEQA analysis, what the City Council is looking at this evening is basically a conceptual plan, and the city has not committed itself to a definite course of action with respect to development that rule out mitigation measures or any alternatives. So it's fine to proceed at this point without doing that SEQA analysis that Mr. Hawkins suggested, that will come at a later time as you look at firming up the conceptual plan.
Is it possible to do the simulation by coning or something without tipping ourselves into a project?
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment, please.
I'd just like to make one question to the City Attorney. Isn't the simulation project a form of a traffic study which becomes input into whatever environmental process we do?
Right, that's my understanding of it. So it'd be fine to do that as part of the analysis.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mosher.
Yes, Mayor Gardner and members of the council, I agree with the speakers who have expressed the opinion that we shouldn't just be giving this project a green light until the decision is informed by as much study and input as is possible. I agree with Mr. Hawkins that the SEQA analysis is appropriate, and with respect, I don't think that he is misreading what the city charter has. We may have forgotten that provision, but when the charter was, when the form of government we operate under was mandated by the voters in 1954, it assigned various powers and duties to various bodies within the city government. Most of them go to you, the City Council, but it also assigns specific powers and duties to the boards and commissions that were established in 1954. And if the voters had wanted to say that the Planning Commission should make recommendations about public works when directed to do so by the City Council, they could have said that, but they didn't. They said the Planning Commission has the power and is required to make recommendations to the City Council regarding any proposed public work, or as Mr. Hawkins said, revitalization of a blighted area. We may have forgotten that, but I think we should be doing what the charter says. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman Bernie Swalstad, Chairman of the Business Improvement District. This project has been mentioned by Councilman Hill, started over 10 years ago, and the bid has been working on this, this is a priority. This is a major traffic entrance into Newport Beach, not just Corona Del Mar. I think the two aspects of this, why the bid made this our primary project, and invested over $40,000 in it so far, is the fact that it's, two things, makes tremendous beautification to the entrance, a major entrance in the city of Newport Beach, it also resolves some traffic problems that we feel are there now. I think the staff has done an excellent job in stipulating the steps that would be taken to try to vet some of the problems that a few people have. A couple of people here from the public that are against a lot of things in the city, this... the city, this evidently is one of them. In part, we want to solve, we're not going to get rid of the parking, that's going to be replaced somewhere on one of the streets or somewhere in another area, and staff and the bid are working on that proposal. So the parking, that parking is probably the only place in Newport Beach that you have parking in an intersection, and I think that's probably in a lot of ways, I know it's not safe, I know it's probably not appropriate, and so that's something that may not even be safe and legal. So that's one aspect of that situation. We want to work with the public, want to work with the commercial people, and we want to work with the city council to make this project a good project. I believe that these studies, that I think one of the councilmen has mentioned, to cone off this area, we did this a couple of years ago, and do it again in a proper way, and if we have problems, then we need to resolve them or take some other action. So I would recommend that you approve this tonight, and that we press on, do the studies, we'll have to do the environmental studies, we'll have to do everything by law. There'll be at least, God knows how many more hearings in regard to this for the public to have input. We have gone before the residents' association board, which covers all of Corona Del Mar, about 10 or 12 associations, twice in the last two, three months, and basically, except for a couple of people in this room, we had pretty good, very good acceptance of the general idea. We have to solve a couple of problems, if we solve those problems, it'll be a go, if we don't, we have to adapt, or whatever. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ron Hendrickson, I live in the Port Streets, and Bernie may think I'm one of the two people that he's referring to, but there are several people that have some concerns about the project, and I'd like to just note that I, living in the Port Streets, some people may think that's quite a ways away from Corona Del Mar, but as a matter of fact, we are, our association, Newport Hills Community Association, is less than 80 feet away from the northwest corner of the Corona Del Mar boundary, so we really have to watch over our neighbor Corona Del Mar and make sure that everything's done right. But we are all, myself, my neighbors, we frequent business in Corona Del Mar, and we're very supportive of it. We want to make it right, and so that's why we are trying to provide our input, whether it's accepted or not, it's in an effort to do the right thing. In my purchases down in Corona Del Mar, one of my major businesses is Fast Eighties Barber Shop, which I have frequented for 35 years, and where I get a lot of advice, that's where it all comes from, in Newport Beach. So anyway, we want it to be right down there. I've written a letter, and I'll try to get through it here, but Dave, can I give this to you just for the record? It's interesting that, on the one hand, our city is considering the addition of a third lane westbound on PCH under the bridge over Newport Boulevard, and on the other hand, we are planning to revitalize CDM by diminishing the size of the MacArthur Coast Highway intersection, purportedly to reduce the length of pedestrian crossings, eliminate traffic congestion, which I think is questionable, and allow for a focal point entry to CDM at this key intersection, which we're supportive of, I think that's a good idea. But I don't think you have to get rid of a lane to do that. There's however, little demand for the pedestrian crossing at this intersection. We've done some observations, and on one Friday, thinking Friday would be a lunch day, people would be out there crossing the street, if in fact that's what they were doing, one person in 50 minutes crossed Coast Highway in front of Corona Del Mar Center. So, anyway, or Plaza, that is. In order to accomplish what's being proposed and revitalize the CDM Business District, the current proposal is to relocate the merge of the third lane on the south side of the Coast Highway to west of MacArthur Coast Highway intersection. We understand that secondarily, as a result of the elimination of the third lane and the nine parking spaces on the south side of Coast Highway, the sidewalk at this location can be widened from 12 to 33 feet, allowing for extensive landscaping, outdoor dining, art displays, musical events, across from where southbound MacArthur traffic is turning left onto Coast Highway. It's difficult to believe these proposed changes to accommodate outdoor dining, part of the vision of the last decade, are not the real reason for the relocation of the third lane. It should be also noted that the California ABC requires that dining tables, which include serving of alcoholic beverages, must be in a defined area, and that means either with a wrought iron railing around it or landscaping. So that's something to keep in mind when we're talking about a flexible area here that could be used for things other than dining. And it seems to me we have a town square at Marguerite that would serve the purpose of art exhibits or musical events, and not put them right where we have a major intersection with loud and noisy traffic. What is unfortunate is that only a small portion of CDM businesses will benefit from this significant million dollar plus expenditure. I believe the entry statement could still be accomplished without relocating the third lane, and therefore funds could be available for additional landscape features throughout the CDM Business District, benefiting a majority of CDM businesses, not just a few. Another factor which I believe is not being accounted for is the continued increase in traffic throughout our area, and recognition that Coast Highway, Highway One, is still Newport Beach's main east-west transportation artery. If our new city hall and park turn out to be an architectural tourist attraction, which I think it will, we're going to have more traffic to deal with. And in conclusion, I recommend that the project be reconsidered to see how the dollars can be spent to increase the beauty of a more extensive portion of Coast Highway and benefit more businesses in Corona Del Mar rather than only half a dozen restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
It's hard to follow him, but I'll try. I'm Novelle Hendrickson, and I was interested, we've been to a few of the, oh, okay, thank you, thank you, Babe. We've been to about four of the five cap meetings, and it was kind of an interesting situation, because we vaguely remember, I mean, our minds are going, that a vision of 99, when the first relinquishing of Coast Highway became set in stone in 2004, what was really all, it was all about. At that time, we weren't as active, we'd been active in other areas, so we had kind of slept through that one. But we really feel, at least I do, that relinquishing of the Coast Highway was a very terrible thing for a lot of people in Corona Del Mar, who live either south of, I guess it would be, south of Fifth Avenue, the real old Corona Del Mar, and the ocean side to, Coast Highway to the ocean. Those people need to get home, they need to use the third lane, as was said from one of the speakers here tonight. And one wintry night, it was raining, I was watching the cars on Third Lane, which it seems pretty bizarre that I did that, and watching them turn right on Carnation, as if, as this other lady had said tonight, and as a matter of fact, with the left-hand turn lanes turning on, right onto Carnation, as well as the southbound on Pacific Coast Highway turning, in one hour, 100 cars turned right. That's a lot of cars in an hour's time, both from MacArthur, turning left, and the other from going straight on the third lane. It was very evident when we went to the first cap meeting, which was in September, that everything was pretty much a done deal. You were using the same old plan of 99, the drop lanes were going to be farther back, that it would take two traffic lights to be able to do that, so they drew it closer across from, actually near what it is, Ruby's, for that to happen. So people voiced their opinions, they didn't like it, they thought it was more traffic, they said even in Corona Del Mar, it's hard for safety equipment to get through, there's so many trucks going through Corona Del Mar on the four-lane highway there, that it's also very, a safety issue if you're driving in two lanes, because those lanes are not as wide, because Caltrans has a different lane substance than if we do it ourselves. And we do it ourselves, we did it ourselves when we relinquished that highway, so that we could put raised medians and planting in that area. So we were hoping that, and thought that there were going to be two more chances to put our input in, but obviously, this plan was the only one that anyone wanted to hear about, even though if they did take away the eight, the nine parking places, at least the two that would be in front of the MacArthur intersection, that eight feet would do it with ample and very nice landscaping, as well as the sign, and it would not be as costly as going 33 feet out at that intersection. Interestingly enough, I looked at the parking study, and that was done by the Walkers in 2008, but was brought to the council in '09, and nothing really was really accomplished much at that point in time. Corona Del Mar didn't want to have parking meters, they didn't want to have, people didn't want to have to have something so that they could put on their cars, so they could park in front of their places. So at that time, they were really not interested. So the parking thing kind of dropped with this bid, who was ready to do everything for it. But what I want to say, I'm leaving now, that there should be a general plan amendment in this. The coastal commission is, we are in the general plan as having coastal commission for this, and I hope that you would think twice and let this thing air out with the planning commission if possible, and I think it would be possible, but I think things are pretty much the way they're going to be, and that's what I think the NRC has done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Who else is going to speak, please? Can I see a show of hands? All right.
Hello, Frank Peters again. I would like to speak in favor of this. I attended several of the cap meetings, not everything that I observed in the plan to date seems perfect, but what I observe is a very exciting opportunity here to perhaps step away from our orientation to automobiles and parking, to create a great, potentially great pedestrian space. So I encourage the city to consider this experiment. I think we should do it in many more places around the city.
Thank you. All right. Any other, the council? I would just say that this is my district, and I am not interested in doing things that are going to make things harder for people, so I will be interested in the studies. I do think that this is a major entrance to Newport Beach, and I do think it's deserving of beautification. And I've also made a commitment to work with both the residents' association and the bid to come up with a long-term parking solution that will help both residents and businesses. It's tough, it's tough when you have residents and businesses mashed in like we do, and I know that it's going to be frustrating, but we will find a solution. And I assure you that as we go along, we will get your questions answered, and if there are major traffic issues, we will change the project for sure, if so. But we will have lots of public hearings, and you will have many more chances to have your opinions heard. Is there any motion? Mike?
Well, I just had a comment. I want to make it clear here, I'm not voting for a project. What we're talking about here is a concept, and I'm not greenlighting anything, not voting for any project, all I'm suggesting is, this is a concept that I am supporting, that's worthy of additional study and analysis, which I'm sure there will be a surfeit and abundance of. So I'm pleased with this project.
It's a concept.
There I go, I called it a project. It's a concept, I'm pleased with it, and I'll be happy to support it, and I'd like to move the recommended item.
I would second that.
All right, is there any other comments?
Well, I won't be supporting it, I think that we need to do studies and approve concepts, and I feel that once the word gets out that that right turn, drop lane into Carnation's going away, I just think there's going to be a lot of opposition. I don't think people are really aware that that is on the table, so I would like to see more studies and more community input.
Well, I think that when we do our coning or however, the striping, that people will become aware of it very quickly, and we'll get a big reaction to that, whether it works or doesn't work, we'll probably see pretty quickly. All right, please vote. With Councilmember Dale voting no, the motion carries. Thank you. And now, the quarterly business report.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciated Councilmember Hen's comment early on about this document, which is available on the website, as well as in some limited hard copies. I'm not going to make a big presentation about it, you guys have seen it, you folks have seen it a couple of times. This is our updated version of it, I welcome any comments or questions about it from yourselves or the public.
Councilwoman Dale?
Yellgrass, Newport Harbor, where are we on that?
Very close.
Here we come. Mayor Gardner may know more about it than I do, but yeah, I think we are, we were meeting kind of with the final group that was throwing a little bit of a monkey wrench into things, I think that was the state board, the Water Resources Control Board, and hopefully we can actually develop our concept from that.
So we're close to the regulating agencies?
Getting approval from the regulatory agencies, yeah.
And for us taking over the control of it, and guaranteeing a certain amount, and then we could be able to do it.
And ironically, if I'm remembering this right, it wasn't so much the federal agencies that were having a problem with it, it was more the state agencies, which was a little bit of a surprise to us.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
I would just comment, and I also appreciate the fact that Mayor Hen focused on, or former Mayor Hen focused on some of these items early on, but I think the most impressive statistic in this presentation is the fact that in fiscal year 11, in the fourth year of the recession, for the fourth year in a row, our reserves hit an all-time record high at $94 million. This comes at a time when Santa Ana had exhausted its reserves, and has now terminated its fire department, where Costa Mesa is going through major organizational shifts, because their reserves are down to perilous levels, to where the city of Irvine drew on their reserves in order to maintain their level of services. Our reserves grew by $11 million to the highest level in the city's 106-year history. And I just think that really speaks well to the management of the city and our fiscal sustainability policies, and how we've moved forward. Now, we've put some of the money now into the facility's financing plan, so that we can use it appropriately for our capital projects, but even so, as the report indicates, we're running ahead of budget in terms of revenues, and we're running behind budget in terms of expenditures, and so we'll be able to add, I believe, at the end of the fiscal year, additional money to reserves this year as well. And I just think that, more than any other metric in this report, speaks to the good management of the city.
Councilwoman Dale?
Yes, I appreciate those very articulate comments about our reserves, and I would also add that we are delivering cut and balanced budgets, so these reserves aren't just because of revenue surpluses, they're because of cut and balanced budgets.
Councilman Hen?
Cut and balanced budgets that almost uniformly preserve the high level of services for our community, so just wanted to add that little addition to it, yeah. I did, I have several very quick comments here, but one, just a suggestion for perhaps improving the presentation of the report, and, you know, it looks to me like we kind of take the position that this is a quarterly report for the quarter ended December 31st, but the report really is issued a month or two after that quarter end. And I just suggest that we include updated information in the report as of the date of its issuance, because there, in several cases in here, there has been additional occurrences that would, you know, be helpful to be, have been said. So I just suggest that you date the date, that you show the date of issuance, and that So I just suggest that you date the date, that you show the date of issuance and that information be included if there is update through the date of issuance. I did have a couple of quick questions. I had asked on page five once before, the community development revenue, there was a, we're estimating now a reduction in revenue because of a delay of a project, and I would still like to know if we can disclose that, what project that was that resulted in that developer fee delay. If you can't answer it tonight, if you can just let me know, I'd appreciate it. And then, let's see, several of the staff, except several of the committee and commission memberships, I think probably could be updated. And then I had a question regarding whether or not Marina Park and Sunset Park, do we have an agenda date for either of those, for Marina Park? Maybe, hopefully.
Let's Dave do it. Dave's pretty close to it here.
The latest we had a report from Coast Commission staff was they talked about April or May for Marina Park. I have a meeting with them on this week to talk about Marina Park, see if we can get a permanent date on that. Sunset Ridge, we have not resolved a couple of issues yet, so we do not have a date. If I had to guess, it'd be early summer. We'd love to see it April, May also.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. I was hoping against hope you'd have an actual date on that, but thanks for your efforts. And I think that's -- that's it. That's all my questions. Thanks. Again, it's a fabulous report. I really appreciate it.
Any public comment on the report?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, I'd like to echo Councilman Hen's complimentary remarks about the quarterly business report and the effort the city manager goes to produce it. And I think it's, like him, a very useful document. You'll notice I'm not waving anything around. For those of us who are more comfortable looking at something like this card copy that he has, rather than an electronic document, I'd like to point out that there were no copies of it even out in the lobby, even in the complete agenda book of the proceedings of tonight's meeting. So yes, I have a copy now, but it might be helpful for the city manager to point out where other people, other technological dinosaurs like me, who are more comfortable looking at the thing in hard copy, can and where and how they can find a copy of it. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I would assume copies are available at the library.
Yeah, but I get, actually, I don't know if they made it over the library. I assume they have, but maybe I'll work with the city clerk to make sure. We don't want to obviously overprint, but we don't want to underprint, and maybe we've been erring on the side of underprinting. So I do like to encourage everybody, because it is such, it's a fairly costly document to print, to try to use it online, but I understand.
A lot of trees.
We need to hit that sweet spot. Yeah.
All right. And it's, we don't have to take action on this. I take it we're just accepting. All right. Item 25, resolution supporting petition to amend regulation in section 1870, 705.5. This is council member appointments.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gardner. In general, the Political Reform Act conflict of interest provisions apply only where the public official makes, participates in making, or in any way attempts to use his or her official position to influence a governmental decision in which the official knows the official has a financial interest. One of those financial interests that an official can have is income. For nearly 40 years, the definition of income in the government code provisions, which were adopted by initiative in 1974, have excluded salary and benefits received from a governmental agency from the definition of income for purposes of determining whether a person has a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act. In 2011, the Fair Political Practices Commission issued an advice letter to the Ventura City Attorney, finding that council members may not participate in the process to appoint themselves to a position that pays more than $250 in a 12-month period. The opinion of the Commission was based on a 2005 amendment to the regulations, which the Commission has interpreted as prohibiting government officials from appointing themselves to a position receives a different salary from other employees of the governmental agency of the same job classification. The opinion is contrary to the stated reason for adding the word "appoint" to the regulation. Specifically, when the regulation was amended in 2005, the stated reason for adding the word "appoint" to the regulation was to prevent a public official from appointing the official's immediate family to a position which could have a material financial effect on the public Back in October of 2011, a resident from Tustin filed complaints with the Commission against 69 city council members throughout the state, most of who are located in Orange County, alleging that the council members violated the regulation by appointing themselves to board positions. The FPPC's, I'm sorry, the Commission's interpretation of the regulation is inconsistent with the government code that specifically excludes salary reimbursements and other benefits from the definition of income. In essence, the Commission's interpreted the regulation to create an exception for appointments to the statutory exception, which provides that government salary benefits do not constitute income. This interpretation of the regulation is contrary to the express language set forth in Government Code, section 82030B2. Overall, it appears that the FPPC has made a mistake in its interpretation that's contrary to state law and would limit the ability of the city council to consider who should be appointed to various boards, commissions, who's the mayor, mayor pro tem. The voters of the city elected the council to consider all items before them, and this interpretation by the Commission appears to be an unreasonable restraint on council members' ability to effectively represent their constituents. There we go. Several cities have submitted a petition to the Commission asking for an amendment to the regulation to bring it into conformity with state statutory law, and tonight we're asking the city council adopt a resolution in support of the petition, which is scheduled to be heard on March 15th, 2012. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned that we might all be conflicted in voting on this resolution since we might eventually benefit from it. Should we all recuse ourselves from the dais here?
No, I think you're going to be all right voting on this one.
Well, I think one issue that came up from a communication from a resident was, well, this is good because it keeps us from a Bell situation, but I would like to point out that in Bell, they were appointing themselves to city committees, which were paying. We have, none of our city committees or commissions pay the council people, so we can appoint ourselves all we want. All we get is to sit at another meeting. A few, I think, Orange County Sanitation District and a couple of other
TCA.
Organizations that are outside of our control, but we have membership on, they have decided to reimburse members who sit on their boards. But it's not something, it's not our policy that the cities, that the city states, we simply send somebody there so that we can have a say in the policies that they develop. But I want to reiterate, none of the committees that the city has pay anything at all. It is all free hours that we give. All right. Any more discussion on this? Councilwoman Dale?
I have a question. It seems as if we were following a practice for many, many years and sort of a settled practice. I mean, can an agency then just sort of make a completely different interpretation and issue a violation that's been against a practice that's been longstanding?
Well, that's exactly what appears to have happened in this case. The state law hasn't changed any significant aspect, especially in relation to the applicable provision here, in over 40 years. The FPPC, when they, they draft their own regulations, though, and when they drafted the regulations, they basically said the point wasn't to address the issues that they're now saying are causing them concern as far as council members appointing themselves to other boards and commissions. You know, it is a significant change in their interpretation, and that's why we're asking them to basically bring it into conformity with what the state law says.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Well, there's a lot of policy implications to what they're doing here. And Tustin, really, it's a case of gadflies gone wild, because it makes absolutely no sense. You know, we get along fairly well on this council, but if you had a different group of people up here, you could have a 3-3 split on the election of mayor and not be able to elect a mayor. The mayor could not be able to appoint him or herself to a committee, and the mayor pro tem would have to sit in and conduct that part and make an appointment as mayor pro tem if the mayor wanted to sit on one of these outside committees. The fact of it is, is that they've
Which she doesn't.
They've made this ruling, but yet the same FPPC guidelines don't require you to report the income because it's government income on your disclosure form. So it's a completely inconsistent rule that has highly unintended consequences and is simply silly. So I'm hopeful that the FPPC will see the error of their ways on March 15th.
Public comment, please.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, I believe the Political Reform Act does address the problem of not being able to reach a vote, and people who would otherwise be conflicted can't participate when necessary. But I have no interest in arguing the legal points of this issue. It seems to me this is a completely wrong response to a very minor issue. It seems to me that it's just a fundamental principle of good government, that if you are taking a vote that's going to enrich you personally, even in a tiny way, $250 an hour, there's no harm in letting the public know that you're doing that. And in fact, it seems like a positively good thing to let the public know that you're doing that. And regarding the staff report, I could, but I won't ask for a show of hands as to how many of you actually have read the regulation that you're asking to modify, or it was not in the presentation here, it's a rather lengthy regulation, or the petition that you're asking to be joining in. I don't see that the petition or the regulation and the staff report available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
The petition is available on the table outside if you'd like to have a copy.
Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar. I think it would be good in the public forum to disclose exactly how much is being made on each of these committees. I know we say it's not very much, but $250 is $250, and that's a lot to someone. And I could be wrong, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of them is up to $3,000 a year or something like that. May I am overstating it, but that's a chunk of change. And if you have a particular member, year after year after year after year that's collecting that, that's a lot of money. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No. Do I have a motion?
Move the item.
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution title, Resolution Number 2012-22, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, supporting the petition before the FPPC to amend regulation section 18705.5 relating to council member appointments. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Is there a motion for reconsideration?
No. Then we will close, that we will adjourn in memory of Jack Beautifish, who passed away on January 30th. Jack was a resident of Newport Coast and served for over 10 years as a member of the Newport Coast Advisory Committee, where Keith and I had the opportunity of working with him. He was, and this is absolutely, he was a calm, polite voice in assisting the annexation, and he was also a calm and polite voice on that committee. He received his undergraduate degree from UC Santa Barbara and a graduate degree from Thunderbird School of Global Management in Arizona. He co-founded Group Dynamics, Inc., a sports and entertainment marketing company, was co-founder of the National Hockey League Quebec Nordiques and the International Frack Association. Did you know that?
Only when I read it.
He helped establish a professional women's tennis tour and directed more than 50 international women's pro tennis tournaments, and he also served on the Women's International Professional Tennis Council for more than a decade. Now, that does show his modesty, that he wouldn't mention all this. Amazing. He was an accomplished athlete during his lifetime. He played baseball for the Dodgers farm team, rugby for the Olympic Club in San Francisco, and won many sailboat races as a member of the California Yacht Club and Balboa Yacht Club. He is survived by his wife, Robin Wempler White, daughter Jennifer Beautifish, stepdaughter Monica Lee Piratsky, and her husband Ryan, stepson Robin Schroff and wife Carla, and a grandson Taylor Christensen. Jack was preceded in death by his first wife Marilyn, second wife Janice, and his son Wesley, and the services have already been held. Mayor Protem Curry?
Well, I would just say you can see from all of those occupations that he was a man of incredible talents, and he brought those talents to bear on behalf of the neighbors of the Newport Coast. And he was always a diligent and dedicated representative, always working for the betterment of the coast, and was an absolute delight to serve with.
And we are adjourned.